Right, so we're now back live. And we move to item 14, which is notice of motions. Motion submitted, understanding order number 12. And I believe this is councillor Walker.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, councillor Jones offered the critique to this motion, said it wasn't tight enough. And I completely agree with her, actually. It's not a polished motion. But I would like to offer my excuse to members if they'll indulge me on this. I'm working an awful lot. I'm working most of my waking hours trying to keep my business going so that I can keep pace with the change that's happening, which is not only affecting my finances, but the finances of the people I employ at this historically precarious times. It appears it to be the plight of my generation that we work but don't seem to get financially any better off. But I do digress. I'm here to represent the people of work. And as Kieran Starmer mentioned in his conference speech on Tuesday, the Labour Party is the political wing of the working people. So I wrote this motion because I felt there was a need to do something, yet things have become much, much worse than in the time since I've written this. We could all contemplate the prospect of not putting on the heating till October, going out with our friends a little bit less, cooking, using cheaper ingredients, and even comfort ourselves that we've got more food banks in this country now than McDonald's. So we won't starve, but facing large-scale loss of homes is a catastrophe I hadn't even contemplated when I wrote this motion. There's no one here who will deny the fear and the worry coming out of our communities around their financial uncertainty. Village leaders of Redington have approached us, asking us to set up warm spaces for our residents to access during the month ahead. It's a dreadful prospect to consider, the idea that residents will be needing to keep warm, not in the least because they will ultimately be having to go back to cold homes. This is horribly juxtaposed by the chances of removing the top 45 rate of income tax, 45% rate of income tax, which is subsidised by borrowing, which led to the tanking of the pound, and the unprecedented emergency intervention from the Bank of England. Inaction on this issue would look callous and inhumane, and at best be irresponsible. So I urge all members of this council to vote for the motion so that we, a Rushcliffe Borough council, can start to improve on our workings and our processes before the upcoming winter in an attempt to mitigate some of the issues our residents are going to face. So I do offer this imperfect motion as an imperfect start, but a start nonetheless towards some cross-party action the borough can take towards the pain that's coming, because doing nothing really cannot be our offering. Thank you.
And councillor Gaunt, second to this?
Yes, I'd like to second this motion, and I reserve the right to listen to what has been said.
Thank you. I open this up then for discussion. Councillor Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, okay, I mean, you didn't say a great deal about the content of your motion in that. And obviously, it's not that nothing's happened. The government's just announced 64 billion in aid to support houses in terms of their energy costs. I'm not going to go into addressing other issues because they don't have a bearing on the motion that you've presented to the council this evening, which is about government schemes for insulating homes, as far as I can make out. And we have a strong track record in that as a council. We've secured funding from schemes such as Lab 2 and 3 of nearly a million pounds and half a million pounds respectively, and a further 205,000 for off-grid homes to retrofit and to provide up-to-date insulation and improvements in their energy efficiency. So this is practical stuff. I mean, I could wax lyrical about the issues that we know people are facing, but these are practical schemes that we've achieved, that we've got money for, that we've delivered. Eighty-four homes in the Lab 2 area in East Leake have benefited from this significant resource, and it's made a huge difference to those homes and the people living in them. And I'd rather assumed that was the sort of scheme that you were talking about in your motion. I'm not so clear now. You talk about government schemes being chaotic, but you didn't offer any examples of why they are chaotic. They may be bureaucratic, and that's often the case when dealing with government money. But certainly, I think the opposition are the first to shout out if government is giving funding away that doesn't have appropriate safeguards and appropriate checks and balances to make sure that the funding is going where it ought to be doing, going and delivering what it ought to be doing. On the point about officer time and competition for resources, I think it's a moot point. I accept, I mean, I'm going to stick to your motion rather than your preamble, because that's what we've got before us for discussion. I think it does, I agree, take up officer time. But in my experience, competitive bidding can be extremely useful in focusing resources, in ensuring that you have the most innovative and the most value-for-money projects coming forward for what are limited sources of government support. But I do accept the argument that they can be time-consuming, and if you don't get the reward, if you don't get the funding in the end, one can argue that there may be more fairer, equitable ways of distributing that funding. But I don't think it's a moot point. It may be that allocating funds just simply on statistics will deliver the same outputs. But when I was on the other side of this kind of process, I did not see that working effectively or as effectively as competitive bidding. I agree about longer-term funding. I think the point's been made. It would be good if we could have longer timeframes in which to bring together our plans and to deliver them, rather than coming across the funding at the end of a financial year or with a short timescale and having to find people to deliver it and deliver it well and in a timely fashion. And I think we'd all support that. I think, therefore, it's really welcoming in the devolution deal that they recognise the importance of energy efficiency, which I think councillor Mullander mentioned when we talked about that issue earlier. And I think it's paragraph 4.7 of the devolution deal does set out that there will be significant sums of funding for retrofitting of housing to evolve to the boroughs, to enable us to undertake that work on a much more strategic basis. I don't think anybody would argue that this work does not need doing. I don't think any of us would argue that having a strategic approach to resources that would enable us to plan and enable us to deliver this quickly and efficiently is a good thing, would be a good thing. We believe that the devolution deal will be approved, and we believe that the funding will come through to us for refurbishing. So the issue about this motion for us really is one of timeliness. And whether or not now is the time to be asking for this, and we can see clearly from the devolution perspective that this issue will be addressed in there. So therefore, we won't be supporting the motion this evening. But we do accept that if the devolution deal doesn't address this and doesn't provide for more strategic funding at the borough level for retrofitting and energy efficiency, that it would be appropriate to bring this motion back to council in the beginning of next year, next financial year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brennan. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will be supporting this motion. Local authorities, more importantly, our residents, need more certainty, a steady process by which the government supports energy improvement schemes. The current trickle-down government should understand that a regular trickle over a longer timescale, as you've mentioned, is far better and more efficient than an on-off gambling process between local authorities. And for that reason, and that reason alone, we will be supporting this motion because we think it's a race of officer time, and it's a gamble each year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Summullander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will also be supporting this motion. I think I agree with councillor Jones that it could be better written, but I fully understand that it has been a very difficult time for everyone at the moment with the enormous increases in energy bills and so on. And this is absolutely vital, that people who are most in need do have improvements to their homes so that their energy bills are lowered. And that is something that is never mentioned. All the time, it's mentioned that we need to have more energy. And no one ever seems to go back to the really, really important point, which is that we shouldn't be using so much energy in the first place. So if we actually did save energy, we wouldn't need to produce more and more, and we wouldn't be in the ridiculous situation that we are now. So we definitely need to have better insulation and indeed microgeneration, although that isn't mentioned in this motion. But we do support this, as we feel that is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mullander. Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I recognise councillor Brennan's point about, you know, this perhaps being something that will be mopped up by the devolution deal, but something is needed to be done between now and when the devolution happens and that comes through. We are supporting the motion. Reducing energy consumption and costs to households is so important in this current crisis, and the grant funding schemes certainly seem chaotic. Our officers are doing a great job working alongside other agencies to deliver benefits despite this. I was privileged to accompany them door-to-door last year around an area in our ward, excuse me. Around an area in our ward identified for support. And despite the advanced publicity, we were met with a certain amount of suspicion. And I'm sure we've all experienced those dubious phone calls, offerings of help in accessing grants for loft insulation or whatever. There are many scams and bogus operations taking advantage of the confusion. What is needed is a clearly badged public scheme delivered by a local government with a well-ordered application process and clear eligibility criteria so that the public have confidence in it. Steady progress will not be achieved by this patchwork of stop-start initiatives. Rushcliffe and Nottinghamshire County Council could be doing more too, for instance, by developing a group buying scheme for solar panels. So we support the motion, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Thomas. I believe councillor Robinson's indicated.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, as I say, I'm not going to go over again. I think we all support, we all need better houses, et cetera. But can we just point out the devolution deal? That's actually in there. As she says, 80 million pounds, nine million of that is going to retrofit it. This is exactly what the motion's about. It's, we can plan for it now. And also, you talk about timescales, councillor. You obviously haven't read it, because she actually says it needs to be spent by April 2023. So it is immediately, they've recognised it's needed, it's a major part of the devolution deal, it says it in there about net zero, it's exactly what we want, it's not a bidding process, it's been allocated to Rushcliffe, and our resources will have that money next year. So really, as councillor Brennan says, I'm sorry, this motion's not relevant at the time at this time, it's in the devolution deal, it's in your papers, it's deliverable, and it's there, and that's what the government's going to do. And this is a 30-year deal, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Councillor Gowan?
Thank you. I think we need to understand how difficult this is going to be. I'm not, I'm trying to be inside my own house. We talk about large amounts of money, it's actually 1.5 billion the government gave yesterday, that's going to do 130,000 houses. So I think you just said nine million, that's not going to do many, right? And actually, the major problem we need to do, which the devolution may do, is train people to actually do this. It's a large amount of money, 37 billion spent on test and trace, it's billions here, billions there. We need billions and billions on this. You know, these are drops in the ocean, frankly.
Thank you, councillor Gowan. Does anybody else wish to comment on this matter? Right. Councillor Gaunt, you reserve the right to speak?
Thank you, yeah. I'd just like to sort of point out how strange it is. Everything that Jen did say was quite relevant to this. It's difficult to talk about insulating homes and trying to improve energy for people without taking into account the current context that people are in. And that's a bit strange to pull her up on that. I also think she's a bit harsh on herself by saying it's a weak motion. I don't think it is. I think what I find a bit strange is if we're going into, talking about this new devolution deal, well, you've just spent the last few hours telling us that it's not fully a done deal yet, and that we have, it's still up in the air. So surely, bringing this now means that that would steer our ship as to where we want to go. So it does, to me, it doesn't make any sense. It would come down to choice. And then, really, we couldn't make the choice to pass this motion, or we could choose not to pass this motion. There's loads of choices we can make, right? We could choose to do many things. About a year ago, we were choosing to look at doing an extension on the back of our kitchen. And so an architect made all the right choices, got some builders, had lots of drawings done, had it all sorted out. And then, because of the cost of living crisis and hyperinflation, the logistics of moving things around, the cost of that doubled. So we made a prudent choice at that point not to do that, right? That was a choice. Now, thank God we did, because right now we'd be choosing a mortgage deal to try and pay for that, it would be hundreds and hundreds of pounds more than it was before. So it's about choices. Thank goodness we didn't make that choice, unlike hundreds of other people, thousands of people in our communities who are having to make their choice now because of what's happening at the moment, right? So I don't understand, right? All we're trying to do is ensure that people in Rushcliffe have the chance, maybe, to then fit their homes or retrofit their homes and make them more insulated. According to the Daily Mail, young people could make choices such as stopping buying avocados so they could get the first aim for 350,000 pounds. They can make choices. We can make choices to cut benefits, we can make choices to cut taxes on the rich. We can choose to help our children out on the property market. We could choose to send our children to private schools. We could do all these things, right? On this side of the chamber, we didn't get to choose the current government, we didn't get to choose the Prime Minister or the Chancellor, we didn't get to choose the change in direction that suddenly happened in our economic strategy for our country. That was chosen by a few hundred thousand people, but we've all got to live with that choice, right? In 2006, there was a law... I've just talked through that.
Then you just stick to the motion as it is on...
Yeah, in 2006, then the previous government, 2006 Labour government, had a law in place to say all homes would be net zero by 2016. That was changed through choice in 2011 by the Conservatives to get rid of that. We're just saying, let's bring some, ask for some changes that could try and make up to that choice that was made, right? We're just asking you to do that. We could choose not to, or we could choose to go for it. I think we should choose to go for this motion because it gives us a little opportunity to help people of our borough.
Sorry, red card.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gaunt. Councillor Walker?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just in defence of my preamble, it was an attempt to bring some sort of reality into this chamber. And I realise that reality for those across the chamber might be difficult for people, for us, for you right now, kind of what we're facing with, what people are dealing with right now may be difficult. And I understand... However, suggesting... There's just a bit of reality that I think we need to embrace.
I was talking...
Yes.
And I think your comment was unnecessary. Please stick to the motion.
But to suggest that the devolution deal is going to help people this winter is frankly preposterous, and I don't know, I don't know, completely mad. But this motion, which I've worked quite closely with officers on, is attempting to do, is to do something now, something that could actually tomorrow directly help people, not in the future, not in 30 years' time, but right now. And suggesting that, you know, it's not based on bureaucratic timelines, it's based on real, live timelines of people's lives. So to me, these are very practical changes that can be made. And that doesn't really make sense how you can agree for it and then note it down, but there we are. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Walker. We'll now go to the vote on the motion. All those in favour? All those against? And any abstentions? That's it, the motion has been lost. We now have notice of motion to put to council by councillor Way. Councillor Way, and seconded by councillor Gowan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a slight amendment to this motion that I'd like to put to the council. Is it working? Is it working? Okay, okay, sorry. There's a slight amendment, and yes, thank you, officers put it up on the, this was the original, I can't see that. This was the original one, I think. And all I've asked to do is to take the first part of the sentence out from point three, because we realised that this was an onerous task on the officers to do this, and actually add a sentence to the part two A, which sort of transfers that idea to the first point about scrutiny, and asking them to consider a methodology for recording new and lost hedges. So you can see that we've changed the, establish a baseline to scrutiny, to consider a methodology. So I'd like to ask if the council is prepared to accept that amendment, and then I'll speak to that.
Can I ask if we agree to the amendment as put by councillor Way herself? All those in favour? Thank you. That therefore becomes a substantive motion. And do you wish to say anything more on councillor Way?
Yes, please. This motion is about hedges and hedgerows. Hedges have a positive effect on both wildlife and the amenity for residents, and play a vital role in carbon reduction.
Councillor Way, can you move your microphone closer? Is that okay? You're quite soft and spoken, thank you.
Is that better? Yes. But due to large-scale developments, other influences, they are being lost at an alarming rate in Rushcliffe. New or replanted hedges can take considerable amount of time to establish and may never provide the rich biodiverse habitat and wildlife corridors to match hedges that have been in place for decades. Over-management, including severe cutting, is endangering viability and biodiversity of hedges and threatening the populations of birds and other creatures that live in, under, and around them. Following our recent commitment to protecting hedgehogs, which also has a positive effect on other species, reducing the use of pesticides and the no-mow policy, this seems to be a sensible addition to our emphasis on improving the natural environment. The Campaign for the Protection of Rural England states that hedgerows are crucial in soaking up carbon, protecting against flooding, and aiding nature's recovery. They team with life, and they are essential for biodiversity. Some hedges are protected under government legislation if they meet criteria relating to length, location, and importance. There's a lot of detail in this, and it's so specific that it leaves a lot of the countryside hedgerows vulnerable to destruction and does not cover urban hedging. The Climate Change Committee and CPRE recommend we increase the hedgerow network by 40% by 2050. I would like to think that we could be more ambitious than that and start working on this now. Over the last few decades, we've seen a decline in the expanse of hedges, and there's evidence to suggest that we've lost half of our hedgerows since the end of the Second World War. Those that remain are often subjected to overcutting that affects their viability. I will use examples from the area I know best, but I'm sure these are repeated across the borough and beyond. On the eastern side of Goaton Road in East Leake, there's a hedgerow, predominantly a mix of hawthorn, brambles, and elder, providing nesting sites and food for birds and other creatures. Walking along here almost any time of the year, you're assaulted by the wonderful sound of the birds that live, nest, and feed there. In recent years, this hedge has been cut at least twice a year, not just cut or trimmed as you would do with any hedge in your garden, but ripped apart by machinery to such an extent that many of the plants have died. This has particularly affected the elder, which was cut back to a very low, unsustainable level. Working with our landscape officer, the maintenance regime has been changed, and the hedge is thriving once more. New whips that were planted where there were gaps unfortunately have been destroyed by utility works, but there are plans in place to rectify the damage. This shows that when local people and officers work together, improvements can be made. On the other hand, we also see swathes of hedgerows removed unnecessarily for housing and business developments. Unless there's a strong case for removing long sections of hedging, these should be kept to a minimum. I know members have been taking on this fight across the borough. In East Leake, a developer has removed 200 metres after promising only to remove enough for two lorries to parcel one another. Planning policy needs to be tightened to avoid this happening in future. Our local public areas have very mixed responsibilities between parish, borough, and county councils. It's important that we encourage all tiers to look at their practices and consider how they will manage and maintain hedges. Attention has been given to trees, to grassy areas with the no-mow and wildflower planting schemes, but hedges are Cinderella environment, often being overlooked. Rushcliffe is largely rural, and hedges around the agricultural land are an important feature of the landscape. We need to encourage and support landowners to look after their boundary hedges. These are the ones that are more likely to receive protection under government rules. In December 2021, King Charles, then Prince of Wales, appeared on TV to support the maintenance of rural hedges and raised the issue of gradually diminishing art of hedge-laying. Increasingly, we're seeing the involvement of other agencies in the form of companies managing open spaces on new estates. During the planning process, we need to ensure that these companies will be required to maintain existing hedges, repair any that are damaged, and replace any that are lost. All is not gloom and doom, again citing an example from East Leake. Recently, we've had a temporary school erected, and the surrounding hedge was given a protection zone. This has resulted in no loss of the valuable habitat and has provided a wonderful setting in which the children learn. As a bit of an aside, working with the site manager, we rescued a great many trees that could have been lost, and these have been relocated within the village and at other schools. This is an example of how development should happen and how communication between all parties is so important. We should also produce a campaign to encourage householders to retain existing hedges and to plant new ones. When properties change hand, it's all too common to find trees cut down and hedges removed. Sometimes this is to be able to park cars, and other times it's to produce a maintenance-free garden. Advice on how to incorporate wildlife habitats within these constraints may help to make vital changes. We're all, if we're working on this, and I'll let you know how it goes. In order to measure progress with our ambitious targets, we need a method of recording losses and gains, and I hope that residents, council members, and parish councils would take ownership of this project, and we use their local knowledge to help build a picture of where we are now and changes in the future. I ask you to support this motion, and in doing so, take a giant step towards preserving an important part of our landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Way. I believe councillor Gowan is seconding this motion?
Yeah, I second this motion and reserve the right to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion then? Councillor Robinson? Councillor Upton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, may I say from the beginning, a lot of what councillor Way has said, we agree with. We support hedgerows. The Borough Council recognises, as you say, hedgerows are a valuable asset to our local areas and throughout the country. Excuse me. But we have limited powers at the moment, and I think you mentioned the hedgerow regulations of 1997, that they're not particularly strong. And we have to work within those at the moment, and we actively use them wherever we can. And there is a requirement for landowners to notify the council about their proposed removal, but as you say, I think only for agricultural or farmland hedgerows. The criteria we have is limited and somewhat complicated at the moment. Um the criteria we have i- is limited and somewhat complicated at the moment. And the legislation does just provide a presumption, if you like, for retention. And this is the starting point for the officers to work from. But where authorised work does take place, then we can enforce some replacement planting. Um on a brighter note, I think the net biodiversity gain, which has come into our vocabulary fairly recently, um from 2023 will provide additional requirements for developers. So where we've got the large new housing estates, this net biodiversity gain will require the developers to retain as much hedging as they can. And will increase, I suspect, the retention of the hedges to achieve the biodiversity target that will be imposed upon them. And they'll have this much higher target to meet. I'm going to conclude there and say fundamentally, we support this motion. We are looking for more hedgerows to be replanted. As you say, my personal experience since the Second World War, we've lost an awful amount when the sixties and seventies, particularly in agriculture, were ripping them up and making ever larger fields for allegedly greater gains from yields of crops. But I do personally see some of that being restated and I applaud that. So I think this side of the chamber, we're prepared to support your motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Upton. Councillor Jones? Oh, councillor Price.
Um yeah, we're fully behind this motion, which is clear and unambiguous. And this week, members of the Sharp Hill stakeholder group were hearing about how hedges have been removed on Sharp Hill in past years. And fortunately, the council's supplementary planning document and landscape plans required the developer to reinstate these. We hope that happens and that the council monitors this. Hedges are essential wildlife corridors. And they add to the beauty of an area and enhance biodiversity. And they're another form of carbon capture. Their survival and proliferation is to be supported. So we will be supporting that motion.
Thank you councillor Price. Councillor Richard Malander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Green Group, rather surprisingly, also very happy to support this motion. It's interesting, looking at a sort of maps of the borough, not current ones, but historical ones going way back. You often see fields being divided up and there's just simply a line drawn on a map. Quite often it's something like an orchard or something like that, as we were shown on the heritage asset training the other day. You'll see a little sort of tree drawing. But for dividing up fields, finding up a different piece of property, it's always just a line. But those were always hedges. It was always a hedge. It was just unspoken that, of course, it would be a hedge. It wouldn't be anything else. Might be a wall if it was a bit, but generally a hedge. And a habitat for many, many kinds of creatures, of all shapes and sizes. And we've been destroying them in this country and other countries have done the same. At their peril. It's a disservice that they produce habitats. They're a wonderful thing for people to look at. We talked previously in other meetings about people wanting to get out into the countryside during Covid to enjoy that. And very much about capturing carbon as well. I think it's something that we should definitely look at. We've got a scheme in place to help people planting trees. Well, let's get the right kind of trees a bit close together and you've got a hedge. That's something certainly that our towns and parishes could look out, look at. I know there's been lots of planting of trees in the new, new and improved Upper Saxondale. I thought so, yeah. And so, you know, that's something that we could all look at. It is very disappointing to see the number of hedges that have been taken out in urban areas. Uh the number of places where people have just said, oh no, I want a maintenance free garden. I'm going to get rid of this hedge. I'm just going to put a fence up. I'm just going to sort of get rid of the lawn and put a plastic astroturf style thing in place as well. I, I, those should be banned. They should absolutely be banned. And we really want to see an increase in the biodiversity, an increase in the wildlife, an increase in the habitat that's good for all of us across the borough. So we'll be wholeheartedly supporting this motion and we hope that we can increase this by 40% and even more in the future.
Councillor Barney?
Yeah, I can't resist standing to my feet and to say something. Um so councillor Way, I just really take my hat off to you on this. And I've discovered again in these last few months that you are a person of action. While people like myself pontificate and pretend that we can make a difference at national letters by writing wheat letters that will never, ever, ever take any credence with ministers. You're quietly getting on with things in East Leake and you've made a real difference for the habitats of the hedgehogs, the hedges and also with the pesticides and the chemical use as well. I think it's fantastic. And I just thought it was a lovely account of just yesterday when I was on a site visit with councillor Way. And she just suddenly became aware that 150 metres of hedging might be at threat and at peril and might be about to be removed. And so she completely lost track of what we were talking about and started to attack this very senior individual with many, many titles to ensure that this 150 metres of hedging was safe. Rest assured, it was. And I can just applaud you councillor Way and say, carry on what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else wish to add to this discussion? No. Um councillor Gowland?
Great to know that. We all understand that the hedges are the correlation compared to trees. Um we understand how they're important for biodiversity and for carbon capture. We understand it's important not just in the country, but in the town to persuade or encourage or encourage people to realise that their gardens can be really important wildlife habitats. Do you know, according to Wikipedia, what Rushcliffe means? Apparently, it's the cliff on which brushwood grows. So I think we need to make this a really big plan from Rushcliffe. We need to make ourselves the hedgerow capsule, if that's the right word, of England. And again, I really recommend you for this motion because it's so clear. It's got real action in it. So thank you. I'm very happy to say it.
Thank you councillor Gowland. Councillor Way, you wish to respond?
Um thank you. And thank you for all your nice comments and I'm pleased to know that this is going to be universally supported. Give.
Thank you councillor Way. We'll now move to the vote on the motion. All in favour? Is there anybody who's against?
No.
Anybody who's sustaining?
No.
I think that's carried. Thank you. We now move to questions from councillors. And councillor Walker to put your questions. Councillor Brennan?
So this comes directly from residents of Rushcliffe, Rotherham. So residents would like more bike, secure bike storage at the arena throughout the borough. Could Rushcliffe Borough Council look to include bike storage like that located in Bridgeford Road car park and around Nottingham City in other locations in and around Rushcliffe? Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, when you asked this question, I didn't know much about this. I know quite a lot about it now. It's much more complicated than I had anticipated. Actually, it's quite a challenge to provide completely secure storage. I'm sure you know more about this than I do. Secure storage facilities, which also has public access. So as I understand it, the unit in central West Bridgford is linked to the city card scheme. Um and officers here have had a look, if we could create something similar that would work here, perhaps with the Parkwood membership card. Um but this would require significant investment and an electricity supply, which isn't currently available. However, we do recognise that the problems with the cycle thefts at the arena. So in addition to various CCTV cameras, we've installed an additional cycle rack next to the entrance doors, which allows good oversight from Parkwood staff and from people coming and going into the entrance. Additionally, if customers use an appropriate D-style lock, then we think this will afford a pretty good level of protection. I've been told that since this action was taken, the issue of bike thefts is much improved here. And furthermore, as part of our emerging walking and cycling strategy, we'll continue to explore opportunities such as the new Bingham Leisure Centre, Bingham Marina, to create more cycle parking and secure storage at appropriate locations and within our resources. Thank you.
Councillor Brennan, councillor Walker, do you have a supplementary question? No, thank you very much. Um. We now have councillor Gowland, who has a question to put to councillor English.
Hi, I admit I'm not quite clear of status of the problems with West Bridgford's fire station, but I certainly understand there's a proposed reduction in the fire service at West Bridgford. And given that, would Rushcliffe please undertake a public information campaign on fire safety in the same way as they do things to support the police with police personnel safety?
Councillor English.
Thank you. Well, in contrast to councillor Brennan's opening, I'm aware of this and it's something I've got passion about. But in context of the question and to give clarification to members of the public, the Fire Authority have proposed cuts, which would see Rushcliffe having no full-time cover in its station overnight and just one fire appliance on London Road instead of the two that they have currently. The Fire Rescue Service is part of the South North Community Safety Partnership, a statutory body under the Crime and Disorder Act of 1988, sorry, 1998. So we all regularly share communications and messages, including allied community risks such as fire safety. Therefore, if the fire service made this change and created an information campaign as part of their mitigation, we would always seek to support and promote that. But just to be clear to members, these cuts have not yet been made. There's a consultation period for which the Fire and Rescue Service are required to undertake. So there is time yet to stop this. I hope councillor Gowland and her Labour Party members here tonight will petition to stop these cuts, which are being proposed and supported by the Labour Party and the Fire and Rescue Authority.
Shame.
And will we certainly make Rushcliffe-
No cross conversation.
And will we certainly make Rushcliffe, including councillor Gowland's own ward, a more dangerous place to live from a fire and rescue risk perspective?
Have you got a supplementary? Okay, thank you. Um we now move to, to invite councillor Thomas to put your question, councillor Robinson or Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What progress has been made in implementing the council motions adopted on quieter fireworks in March 2020? Protection of hedgehogs, July 21, and reducing use of pesticides, March 2022. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thomas.
Thank you. Um. A briefing note has been prepared and it will be sent to all councillors next week, which will set out the actions taken as a result of all the supported council motions during 21 and 22. However, in the meantime, I will give the specific updates on the ones that you've highlighted. So in respect to fireworks, I can confirm that we issued a number of press releases, including an article in Rushcliffe Reports, encouraging people to use low sound, quieter fireworks. Um and actually I put that on our own Facebook page as well and it did garner a good deal of public support. I think a lot of people supported the idea of using low noise fireworks. In terms of our own operations, the only time we use fireworks is the Christian sites, which on in West Bridgford. And last year we did use the low noise types. And as far as we know, feedback from the people that attended the event was that they were very happy with it and appreciated it. In respect of hedgehogs, we carried out a range of communication initiatives to promote the protection of hedgehogs, including social media updates, articles and reports, et cetera. Our estate facilities and parks teams have been made aware of the motion and ensure that hedgehog protection is integrated in all current working practices. The topic of the hedgehog preservation has been raised in all our operational working group meetings with key agencies such as VEAN. The development management team are requesting hedgehog highways, which are included on all appropriate new developments and requesting developers to provide guidance and advice notes on biodiversity, which we talked about before, biodiversity net gain to all new occupiers, explaining what measures are in place on their plots, including bat and bird boxes and so on, that may be on their individual properties. In relation to pesticides and herbicides, the council has adopted a revised and significantly reduced spraying regime implemented by streetwise on all council land, with particularly sensitive sites being clearly identified. Written procedures are in place for responsible pesticides used by the council's pest control service to minimise impact on wildlife and pets. Finally, an article on the topic was included in the summer edition of Rushcliffe Reports. Further work will be included in the next version of the council's environmental policy due in late 22, 23.
Do you have a supplementary councillor Thomas?
Um just a quick one, please, Madam Mayor. Um are there any plans to have another go at the quiet fireworks during this current season coming up to November the 5th? Thank you.
I don't know if there are, but I think we should. And I would ask that that takes place.
Thank you very much councillor Brennan. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I think that brings us to the end of our business for the evening. Thank you very much for attending.